Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, November 19th, 2024, 4:30. We'll begin with the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I have invited Reverend Sales here. He is the pastor of Loving Springs Baptist Church and involved in the community along with his wife, Dr. Sales, but I specifically invited him to give the invocation this evening because he also serves as one of his many hats is a police chaplain. And we just have a couple of officers that are in our hearts and prayers, and so I wanted to make sure that we lifted them up at the beginning of our meeting. So Officers Whitson and West were recently injured in the line of duty, and we want to make sure that they know how much they are loved and we appreciate them and their families and they're continuing to be in our prayers. And also, of course, Officer Matt Davis continues to be in our prayers. So Reverend Sales, if you would start us off in our prayer, if everyone would stand as we lift up these officers and their families.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come before you now in the precious and powerful name of Jesus. We thank you, Holy God, for not only this day, but we thank you, Father God, for the community that you've allowed us to enjoy this day in. We thank you, Father God, for the leadership. We thank you, Father God, for them having a mind to serve. We pray that you keep and cover them. We pray, Father God, that they would do as the Scripture says and not lean to their own understanding, but in all their ways acknowledge you, that you might direct their path, that our community might go from good to better to being our best. God, we continue to lift up our first responders. We continue to remember those, Father God, who serve and sacrifice for the betterment of this community. We pray, Father God, in particular today, for Officer Whitson and West. We continue to remember them, and we continue to pray for their healing, not only them, but we remember Matt Davis as well. And we are so encouraged because if you're the maker of our body, you're certainly the healer of the same. And so we pray you continue to cover and keep them. Be with us today in every decision that we make, that it might bring honor and glory to your name, and we might be blessed because of it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Reverend Sales, if everyone will join me in giving the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Beasley Brown. Thank you, Commissioner Reverend Sales, Sean Sales. Appreciate you, your words, your wisdom, and your prayers and thoughts for our city. Mrs. Jackson, you please do a roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Mr. Mizel, you have comments at this time?
I have several, Mayor, if you give me just a few minutes. We've got several awards I'd like to acknowledge in several different departments. First one, let's start with Parks. Our own Cameron Levis is now a Certified Park and Recreation Executive just recently. I think he's one of two in the state, or actually was renewal, but he's only one of two. And guess who the other one is? It's our Warren County Parks Director. So both of them are Certified Park and Recreation Executives. Cameron has also been accepted into the National Recreation and Park Association's Director School this coming March, and so congratulations to Cameron on those. Real quick applause. Continuing, continuing with Parks.
Cameron, go ahead and stand up back there and wave to everybody.
Yeah, so continuing with Parks, our own Tim Kickert. He's a crew supervisor too, Parks Maintenance, big tennis player, tennis enthusiast. If anyone went to Covington Woods Park this past summer, you would see, you would seen a grass tennis court resembling Wimbledon that Tim put together, made it really firm and nice to play on. And Tim was awarded with the United States Tennis Association Special Tennis Event of the Year Award. So congratulations, our own Tim Kickert, on that one. So we've got lots of stars here rolling along. Continuing with Parks, our own Public Information Office. Cameron actually submitted this. We got a Communication Award at the Parks Convention in Katis back a few weeks ago. And so Debbie Highland West, Raina, and Laura all went down and received that award for Communications Award for the Parks. So congratulations to our Public Information Officer for that. Moving on, we also got an Outstanding Facility Award for the Jennings Creek Park Project. So that one's kudos to our Parks Department on that. And now we're going to transition to Public Works. American Public Works Association, the Kentucky Chapter met recently at the convention center, and we cleaned up. We got four awards. Ryan Johnson received the Outstanding Supervisor of the Year. The Fringe Project received the Streetscape Category Project Award of the Year, thanks to Daniel Colter, thank you, that was overseeing that. The next award we got was for the Construction Stormwater Demonstration Site. Courtney Howell is responsible, should get credit for that, putting that program together. That's out at our Glen Lilly Landfill Site. And then finally, we got another project award for our roundabout on Weston and Highland Way that our own, I'm going blank, Phelps, Tyler Phelps was overseeing. And so congratulations to the Public Works Department, all those star players there for those awards. As I usually say, those in the audience attending tonight that want to make comments, public comments, we need to take those up at the end of the regular session, and we need you to sign the register in the back corner of the room. And then finally, I'll be quiet after this, we have a need for a closed session, and I'll let Ashley read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 618101B, for the purpose of deliberations on the future acquisition of real property by the city, as publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired by the city.
Okay. Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mizel. Our first item is our regular minutes from October 15th, 2020, 24.
Go move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Paragon, second back Commissioner Hill. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 247.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Josh Hughes to the position of Deputy Police Chief, Jeffrey Glitz to the position of Assistant Police Chief, Mark Kaiser to the position of Police Captain, and Josh Livingston to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
Go move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Bailey, second back Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to call Chief Delaney up for this one, but as he's coming up, I'd like to acknowledge the retirement of our Deputy Chief Brian Harrell. We celebrated his retirement at the end of October, didn't celebrate, so we're kind of sad too. But Brian, he had 30?
29 years.
29 years, almost 30 years with the Bowling Green Police Department, worked in a lot of different areas, did so much good stuff for our community. And so I want to congratulate Brian Harrell for his retirement, long-term service for our community.
Chief?
Commissioner, I'm on now, okay. Thank you for this opportunity, and also thank Lieutenant Colonel Brian Harrell. He's off enjoying a much deserved vacation right now, and on top of his 29 years of service with the Police Department, he's also retired military. So 20 years he served our country as well. So was glad to have him for those 29 years and all the knowledge and wisdom that he brought to our team. But there's four people in the room that's glad he's gone. I'm just kidding. They miss him as well. First order of business, congratulations to you all on your recent reappointment reelection. Look forward to serving with all of you again moving forward. First person that we have up for promotion tonight is Josh Livingston. If you would, please stand. And all of them have family with them, I'll wait and let them do that at the end. But Josh started with us in 2010. He's from Louisville, Kentucky, so he's a transplant. He came to Bowling Green and decided to make Bowling Green his home. He's one of our training officers, and he has the unique ability to bring the best out of people during training with his patience and his skill set. He's also one of our motor officers, a designated marksman, and he's a firearms instructor. If you would like, I would go through all four, or, okay. Next up is Sergeant Mark Kaiser. He also started with us in 2010, and he's from Louisville, Kentucky. There's a trend here, we keep drawing them from the north down here. Mark is one of our former CRT members. He served on the Critical Response Team for four years from 2013 to 2017. He's also a police training officer, firearms instructor, and he instructs at our academy Next up is Jeff Glitz. Captain Glitz, he went to Bowling Green High School. He's also one of our veterans. He was in the U.S. Army, later transitioned to Kentucky National Guard, and after being stationed in Germany and multiple deployments, he decided to come join the Bowling Green Police Department in 2007. He's attended the Academy of Police Supervision, National Tactical Officers Association Command Course, Criminal Justice Executive Development Program, and the Law Enforcement Instructor Development Course. He was also on our Critical Response Team. He was the commander at one time, firearms instructor, bicycle instructor. He's been a drone operator and a unit commander, and he's also teaches at our academy. Last but not least, Major Josh Hughes. He was born in Eastern Kentucky, and in 1997, he started his career with Bowling Green Police Department as an explorer. He went to Warren East High School, graduated Eastern Kentucky with a Bachelor of Science degree in 2001. He's been a bike officer, he's an academy instructor, and he's one of our recent graduates from the Southern Police Institute Administrative Officers Course in Louisville. Josh has family with him here also tonight. So I won't entertain any questions at this time, but without any reservations, I recommend all four for promotion.
Thank you very much, Chief. I'd like to hear from the officers and introduce your families, starting with Josh.
With me tonight is my wife, Courtney. We just celebrated 10 years about a month ago. My daughter, Kendley, my daughter, Dylan, my son, Hunter, and then my father-in-law, Eric, and my mother-in-law, Paula.
Thank you. Hart?
My daughter, Kendley, my daughter, Chad, my wife, Melissa, and my sister, Maureen.
Thank you. Jeff?
My wife, Laura Rogers, is with me, and along with my mother-in-law, Martha Rogers.
Thank you. Josh?
My 24-year-old wife, Brittany Hughes, and my two sons, David and Jacob, and my daughter, Abby.
Well, tonight is a special night to see the four of you and your families standing here tonight, and we look forward to your continued leadership for our city. Commissioners?
Congratulations.
Friends.
Congratulations.
Let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 248.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Mason Michael to the position of Engineer in the Fire Department.
Go move.
Second.
Commissioner Paragon, second back Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask Chief Brooks to come up and make this recommendation, and after we approve this item, I'd like to, if we can, call a timeout and let them take care of their business that they need to take care of, if that's okay. Thanks.
Chief?
Air Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. The Fire Department has a vacancy in the engineer role. I'm here tonight to recommend a man for that vacancy. Mason Michael, if you will, stand. Mason brings with him a list of credentials that would keep us here all night going through, and we're trying to expedite this meeting. Two, he brings a set of skills that make him worthy of recommendation. It is by no mistake that in our internal promotional process, he come out the top of the list, but more importantly than that, he carries the respect of his peers, that he will serve not only the city but this Fire Department in the role and responsibility that we are pushing and recommending him for tonight. If you've got any questions, we're here to answer it, but again, highly worthy of the promotion, and just looking for your approval.
Chief, we have some special guests with us tonight, Rose Brooks, and I don't know if you were going to mention them, but they're special people, and I know what you said at the, at our event the other night, and they will forever be in our hearts, and we will forever take care of Stephen's daughter. And our hearts, we love you very much. I apologize. I think- Listen, would you like to introduce your family? I apologize.
With me tonight is my wife, my four-year-old daughter, we have our daughter, Dylan, and our five-year-old daughter, Paula. They are both with my mother and father. They're already married, so.
Mason, congratulations to you and your family. Thank you for your continued leadership. Thank you for your brotherhood to our firefighter family, and we look forward to your future as well. Commissioners?
Congratulations.
All right, let's make this official.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Mason. You got to talk to me. This one? 249.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Haley Parrott to the position of Parks Planner in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second. Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Aaron Holsey, our HR Director, to come up and present this item to you. Aaron?
Great, good afternoon. So the Parks Planner position is a new position with this fiscal year. Thank you for approving that addition to the team. We are, Brent spent some time talking to some other Parks Departments, particularly in Little Rock when we went to visit there a couple of years ago about their riverfront and found out that they, they had a position with a function that would take care of a lot of the procurement, capital improvement projects, overseeing the construction of many projects. Brent added a couple more assignments and tasks and responsibilities to this position that would really help out some administrative functions as well, so we're really excited to add this position. We had 38 applications that were received, and I sat on the interview panel with Brent Belcher, Mike Mitchum, Pete Samios, and Cameron Levis. We interviewed nine candidates, and they were, it was the most fantastic interviews that I think I've done in a long time. We had, for any of the candidates who are out there who might be listening, it was just, it was an honor to interview everyone. And so we had did-do second interviews, and selecting those was hard. We did select three for final interviews, and we ended up selecting Haley Parrott. She's with us tonight.
She's standing up.
She's already standing. She's, she's on it, you all. We had them do assignments for both interviews. Hers were, were excellent. She currently works for the Brad Area Development District and Planning and Development Specialist. So she does a lot of this work that she will be doing for us, but for a lot of smaller individual agencies, we think that she knows what she's getting into, so very excited to recommend her for appointment. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Haley, do you have anyone with you tonight?
I do. I have my husband, Tegan, as well as actually my friends of ours from here today, Morgan Hertzey and Austin Sims. I appreciate you guys doing it.
All right. Well, congratulations to you, Haley.
Congratulations.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 250.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Curtis Bergen to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer One in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second. Move back Commissioner Paragon, second back Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
We have a vacancy that we need to fill in this department. I'd like to ask Tiara Britt, our HR manager, to come up and make a recommendation. Tiara?
Good evening, everyone. We are recommending the appointment for a Facility Maintainer One for our Cemetery Division. We only opened it internally because we had several candidates that we thought that might want to move into this role, so what we decided was to go with one of our internal candidates. His name is Curtis Bergen. And Curtis is an honors graduate of Seneca High School, Louisville, Kentucky. He's worked at a few of our local places like Kroger and Chili's Grill and Bar. He works for the cemetery, but he is a very personable person. He received most of his maintenance experience working for ALS Automotive for General Motors, and he's been with us as a permanent part-time person since July, so he's very excited to get started, get in that permanent role, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Tiara. Is Curtis here? He's not here, okay. Thank you. Any questions? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Justin. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 252.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Curtis Bergen to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer One in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Paragon, second back Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
We have a vacancy that we need to fill in this department. I'd like to ask Tiara Britt, our HR manager, to come up and make a recommendation. Tiara?
Good evening, everyone. We are recommending the appointment for a Facility Maintainer One for our Cemetery Division. We only opened it internally because we had several candidates that we thought that might want to move into this role, so what we decided was to go with one of our internal candidates. His name is Curtis Bergen. And Curtis is an honors graduate of Seneca High School, Louisville, Kentucky. He's worked at a few of our local places like Kroger and Chili's Grill and Bar. He works for the cemetery, but he is a very personable person. He received most of his maintenance experience working for ALS Automotive for General Motors, and he's been with us as a permanent part-time person since July, so he's very excited to get started, get in that permanent role, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Tiara. Is Curtis here? He's not here, okay. Thank you. Any questions? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations to Curtis. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 251.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Justin Hicks to the position of System Engineer One in the Information Technology Department.
So moved.
Second. Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel or Tiara?
Another vacancy we need to fill. Ask Tiara to introduce this one to you. Tiara?
So we are recommending the appointment for another System Engineer One. This is a person that would be part of a three-team group that helps work with most of the hardware and the infrastructure for the IT department. We received 40 applications, overwhelmingly great candidates this go around. We interviewed nine, and the gentleman that we chose, he is a native to Central City, Kentucky, but he is currently in Florida, and he's going to be in the relocation process, starting with us, if you guys vote, in January. But a little bit about him, his name is Justin Hicks. He's a graduate of Gallatin High School, and he has a degree in automotive engineering technology, and he is currently a network infrastructure designer supervisor for the city of Gainesville, Florida. So he's bringing in a lot of experience, and I think he's going to be able to hit the ground running with the department. Like I said, he's relocating, so he's not here tonight, but he's watching live, so.
Great. There, Justin. Any questions? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Justin. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 252.
Municipal Order approving amendments to Appendix C of the Administrative Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual related to the Office Associate Two Career Path Program.
Go move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Beasley Brown, second back Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
We realized we need to make a few tweaks to our career path for the Office Associates. I'd like Aaron Holsey, our HR Director, to come up and cover those for you. Aaron?
Great. So if you were to review our most recent policy manual edition, you can see that I added most of our career paths to the back of that in the appendices. So we have many different career paths. Office Associate Two has been here for a long time. Most of the career paths are designated for a certain position or division. Office Associates, however, is a, it's a position that's shared generally by all departments, and finding a way to promote those individuals and have a career path that is both consistent across all of them and still recognizes their skill level is a little bit challenging. And so for a long time, we have always used a computer-based testing, so typing, doing proofreading, Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel. But we also recognize that that does not always define what makes a great office administration person, and so we have come up with an alternative path to someone who may not want to do the computer-based test or, or does not pass those for some reason. So we talked with senior management recently and decided to make an adjustment there. So the original career path still stays, which someone can test out without computer-based skills after two years, or after four years in a position may be promoted with the department head's recommendation. We are also adding an additional caveat in there, almost all of our office associates are POEs, which is a kind of an old title, but means that they do a lot of the finance work for their department. So they do payroll, they do purchase orders, they do P-cards, help with the budget, and so anyone who also shares those functions, we would like the finance department to sign off that they are attending all mandatory training and all financial responsibilities are turned in in a timely manner. So those are the additions to the policy that we'd like to make tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Aaron. Questions? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 253.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Lenora McLaughlin to the position of Office Associate Two in the Police Department.
Go move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Paragon, second back Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
Handoff to Aaron for this one, too. Aaron?
So, this recommendation comes to the career path for an Office Associate Two. Lenora's with us tonight, if you could stand, please. Lenora has been with the Police Department for a long time. She's worked in a couple different divisions. She's currently working in the Training Division. She keeps them in order. We think they're in charge, but really she is, so would not, would kind of be lost without her, and so she kind of fits into this perfect role where she has the years of experience and expertise in her position and comes with a department heads and finance recommendation to promote her to Office Associate Two.
Congratulations, Lenora. All right, questions? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Lenora. Municipal Order Number 2024 Dash 254.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of an award and contract from the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management for Kentucky Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funds in an amount up to $125,000 for architectural and engineering design of tornado shelters.
Go move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Beasley Brown, second back Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So we just found out that we were awarded $125,000 for, for more design work on more tornado shelters, and these two here would be at Lampkin and Hobson Grove Park.[1774.91] shelters. And these two here would be at Lampkin and Hobson Grove Park. We have so far received about $1,086,000, $87,000 in funding to cover Phase One Design and Phase Two Construction. I think that's on about five. Is that right, Jake?
Yeah, first five.
First five. This will cover two more design work on those. There is a match that will cover, requiring us to do 13%, which is roughly $16,000. And this would, will get us to around seven, I think, total, right, Nick? And so we are slowly working our way through these groups. So I want to say there's one more that'll be coming through hopefully soon. But the, this is the second group. We have five in the first group, two in the second group. This is approved for a design work to cover those two. And Jake Moore, our newly appointed Grants Coordinator, and our Grants Manager, Nick Cook, are here, can answer your questions on this one. It's, but it's FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Just want to say kudos for the continued push, going from zero to potentially eight storm shelters. We're grateful for your work, Nick and Jake, and my hat's off to you both.
I also just wanted to thank you all for continuing to make sure that we are making our community safer after the tornadoes and especially in these vulnerable areas. I'm really excited that these are gonna, moving forward. But I did have a question for our community in terms of, you know, this design of tornado-safe rooms. So is this going to be a standalone structure type of shelter, or will it be in an existing building in either of these parks?
So while these will be standalone structures, we are looking at possibly doing some type of additional community facility at Lampkin Park that could adjoin the new structure. That's still kind of in the planning conceptual process, but as far as Hobson, yes, that would definitely be an independent structure.
Other questions? None. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-255.
Minus Water authorizing acceptance of Federal Emergency Management Agency reimbursement funds related to the severe weather event on May 26, 2024, and further authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management.
Move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So if you all will recall, we had a pretty good storm during Memorial Day weekend. This is pertaining to that. We went out and had to do some debris pickup again from that storm. We tracked our cost and submitted that to FEMA, and we were eligible for around $165,000 reimbursement. And so we're here tonight just to get, put your stamp of approval on that, get that money. Matt?
He is here, yes.
Where is Matt? Oh, hey, Matt. Matt's here, can answer your questions on this one. And Jake Moore, sorry, Jake. Jake, Jake took a lead on this one as well. Jake Moore's in the back of the room. So if you have any questions.
Great. Good to see you both. Mr. Mizel, questions at this time? None? Oh, roll call? I thought you said something.
Hold on, none.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Municipal Order Number 2024-256.
Minus Water approving construction and accepting maintenance of Greystone Subdivision, Section 17.
Move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
Hard to believe we're on Section 17 of Greystone, but everything looks good on that. We were out there on around September 6 to do a review of that and found a few things. Did a follow-up on November 4 and everything is good to go. So we're accepting roughly 2,600 linear feet of roadway along with a sidewalk and storm sewer in that neighborhood. And Melissa and her team went out from City Andy, as well as Ben and his crew from Planning and Zoning, and we're ready to go. So if you have any questions, they're here, can answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-257.
Minus Water approving traffic signal construction cost sharing agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Keystone Development Group, LLC.
Move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So this is the signal that we are proposing there on Veterans, close to Whispering Hills. We think we can do a partnership there with the developer. Melissa, counselor, our city engineer's been working with them, and we think this is a good program, good plan, and we are recommending your approval on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Coordinates Number BG 2024-18, first reading, non-binding.
Orders amending Code of Ordinances. Orders amending Chapter Five Animals of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances.
And I'll second that.
I just said postponed on there. Oh, this is one from before.
Mm-hmm. Hill and Alcott.
Hill and Alcott, please. Okay. Mr. Mizel?
So NCS and Code Compliance went to work on this ordinance. It needed some updating. It's been a while since we reviewed it and cleaned it up. But before you tonight is our recommendations for amending Chapter Five, just to update it and make it current day. Brent Shilders is here. Brad Charagowski is also here. Saw him come in. And he's in the back and can answer any of your questions you might have on this one.
Questions at this time?
I just got a few. And I apologize because I thought I sent this to you guys while we was doing the campaign. I think I talked to Hillary about this before. But it's the shelter aspect. And I know like some of it has changed. And I'm looking for, looking out for some of our unhoused population. If you read it, and I don't know if this is some of the newer language or if it's not, but it talks about adequate shelter for dogs in means adorable enclosed permanent structure or structure manufactured which is old and intended to serve primarily as an outdoor shelter for a dog with a roof at least three sides. And then here's the new language, the solid moisture proof raised at least two inches from the ground. The shelter shall be constructed and maintained to prevent the accumulation of the mud, water near the shelter. The dog shall not have to come into contact with standing water within the shelter or such water. But it goes on and on, so I won't read all of it. When I look at that, I looked at if it's someone that's unhoused, it can affect them because they may not have what is considered adequate shelter. Would this affect them or will it not affect them? Go ahead.
So a couple of things, Commissioner Bailey. That's just the definition of adequate shelter. So for example, if at my house I have a doghouse that is in a puddle or doesn't provide the needed shelter, but I expect the dog to sleep in there, then that would not meet that definition. But the definition does not apply to every single situation. It applies to multi-animal permits. So if you're going to have multi animals, you have to have that. And then it applies, it says a person in charge of an animal, it's unlawful, excuse me, for them to fail to provide adequate shelter when appropriate. So it's not in every situation. Not everybody provides an outdoor shelter for their animal. It's just in certain situations. If it's freezing cold outside, if it's too cold for a person, it's too cold for an animal. And they need to have some kind of shelter. If a person needs to go to a shelter, they need to make sure their dog is also getting care. But it doesn't apply to just a person who's unhoused. It applies if you put out a shelter that doesn't meet the definition, if you have a multi-animal permit, or if it's such circumstances that the dog needs a shelter.
Let me ask you this. Let's say if someone goes to a shelter, so someone who's unhoused, they hypothetically go to the shelter, but the shelter does not allow them to have the dog or to bring it with them. And they actually house it with someone that basically have more than one or two dogs in their house. How will it affect them then if they're...
That wouldn't affect them at all. I mean, they would just have a friend watching their dog. That wouldn't change anything. Now, if they left the dog outside and didn't make sure the dog got to a shelter or had any kind of care and it was abandoned, that would make a difference. I mean, they have a duty then to call the police or call the Humane Society for the pet. But leaving it with a friend would be really a very good case scenario. That wouldn't affect anything. Now, if they left it with a friend and the friend left it outside and it was freezing cold, then the friend would be, you know, I mean, the dogs have, you know, a right to have care, just like people do, but...
And I agree with you. I just, I want to make sure that sometimes like our unhoused community, that all they have is that dog and it's the only friend that they have. So I'm trying to look out for them as well.
You're standing. I think part of the issue is that our citations actually attach to a property. People aren't individually cited for animals unless it's a crime, and then they would be cited to district court. So that would be like cruelty to animals. But in this situation, you know, if their situation is such that it's fit for them to be outside, it is for their dog. If it's not, then they need to consider another, you know, alternative for their pets.
I don't want them outside either, but I'm just...
Right. I agree. But yeah, no, if they just left it with a friend, that would not be a problem, unless the friend didn't care for the animal.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Further questions?
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, that our Humane Society, they provide emergency shelter for pets for people who become unhoused, right? For brass residents? Are you all aware of that?
I can't answer to that.
Okay.
That could be 100% accurate. I just don't know.
I have a lot of families who I, within my role in youth services, that I have to transition into emergency housing. And it's my understanding that the Humane Society provides kind of like a homeless shelter for pets, too. So if anyone in our community is in that situation, know that you can reach out to the Humane Society because they want to make sure our pets are safe in emergency situations.
We can verify that, but I feel certain they would because they take pets that don't have anywhere to go. So if those, if people don't have an option, then the Humane Society will take the animal. And then they'll just, you know, charge them or treat the animal, whatever they need to do, and they can pick it back up. And they may even have, you know, something where they waive costs in that situation, so.
Any further questions? None. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-258.
Minus Water approving the purchase of turnout gear in the amount of $97,050 with Phoenix Safety Outfitters of Spring Hill, Ohio through sole source cooperative, I'm sorry, Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract.
Move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, we recently brought on 15 new firefighters to staff some stations. And with that comes the need for 30 turnout sets of gear. And so we did get a grant, 2023 Assistance Firefighters Grant, that will cover 12 sets of the 30. And so they went out and found these on Sourcewell. And so 12 recovered with the grant, 38, 820, and then the other 18, got a good deal on those. Looks like 58,000. All this will be covered out of the Fire Improvement Fund. And try to answer any questions you might have on this one, but this is just from the Sourcewell procurement co-op agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-259.
Minus Water authorizing and accepting the number 202517 for drill tower refurbishments from NPM LLC of Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $83,500.
Move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Our drill tower up at Station Five is, has quite a bit of age on it and needs repair, renovation. So we went out for bid. We did an evaluated bid, I believe, on this and got three proposals. This was to do, let's see here, brick painting, new doors, new windows, stair painting, new electric and lighting in it, and also includes roof painting and a new metal soffits around the outside. Bid RFP was 75% cost, 25% scope, three bids. We're recommending NPM LLC out of Elizabeth Town for a total of $83,500, which is within our budget for, in our Fire Improvement Fund. Dave Hayner, along with Deputy Chief Doug Morris, worked on this for us. And Dave's here can answer any questions you might have on this one.
Okay. Mr. Mizel, questions? Thanks for being here, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-260.
Minus Water authorizing and accepting annual software maintenance services through a sole source from OpenGov, Inc. of San Jose, California, in the amount of $61,017.76.
Move. Second.
By Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
OpenGov, also known as Cartograph, from my day, from what I remember, is our main tool that Public Works uses for tracking streets, sidewalks, traffic signals, stormwater, all their projects to manage assets, their condition, worth. We even use it for our financial statements with our infrastructure review. So we have to do a license. We have 70 users on this software. It's a sole source and we found it out on the co-op and recommending renewal at $61,017.76. Danita worked on this and recommend your approval. Danita can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-261.
Minus Water authorizing and accepting a proposal from Trace Three LLC of Irvine, California, related to a request for proposals for password management system, RFP number 202509, in an amount not to exceed $90,675 over a three-year period.
Move.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to go back and correct what I just said on the last one. That was not through a purchasing agreement. That was directly with OpenGov. I apologize for that. This one is our password management system that we talked to you about at recent meetings. This is something we've been working on for some time. IT went out and did an RFP for this system. I think they got seven compliant bid responses on this. It's evaluated bid. We are, we've tested this. IT staff has tested several. They like this Trace Three LLC system called One Password Solution and are confident that it's going to be providing high security and easy to use, and it's at a good value. We did receive, as you will recall, grant money for this. And this grant money from the Homeland Security Grant is going to cover every bit of this. So roughly $90,000, $90,675 that will be kind of worked on phased in over the next three years. And so again, going with the Trace Three, One Password Solution, and Danita can answer any questions you might have. But IT has tested this out and I think have been using it somewhat, so.
Ever lose your key to the one password system?
Yeah.
Or your SOL? But it's true. Thank you very much. Questions at this time? Okay. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-262.
Minus Water authorizing and accepting the number 202516 for audiovisual replacement project for this Sloan Convention Center from Rexing Consulting Group, LLC, of Alvinton, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Move. Move.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
We have experienced some sound and AV problems over the years at the Convention Center. We did do an upgrade on some equipment not too long ago, but this, we went out for more work, did an RFP. This would improve, upgrade the sound systems, the display monitors, microphones, control system, all the equipment associated with AV technology at the Sloan Convention Center. This was an evaluated bid, 50% scope, 25, I'm sorry, 50% price, scope was 25, and design was 25. was 25. We did get, uh, five proposals, and, uh, Dave, uh, looked, Dave Hayner looked at these, our facilities manager, uh, along with some other folks, and we are recommending, uh, that we go, uh, with, um, Rexing Consulting Group LLC. They have done some, uh, previous work, um, review work out there, and, uh, amount would be $200,000 paid for out of the Convention Center Fund. Dave is here can answer questions you might have on this one.
Hey, Commissioners, questions at this time?
I just have a comment, not a question. I was, uh, colleagues with Mr. Justin Rexing at Western Kentucky University when I was in conference services, and he took care of all of our needs and, and great pick, great pick. All the confidence in the world in him.
Dave, I guess just one quick question. I know we talked about it, uh, at, at another meeting. I thought that the, uh, sound system had already been updated. I know because when we had the cultural awareness weekend, the one from last year wasn't so well, but this year, you know, it went over a little bit better.
So, um, you're right. We, we, we did, we did an $8,000 repair to get part of the system working. This basically will give us the rest of the, the whole building. So the pre-function areas, the other meeting rooms, the rest of the ballrooms that currently still don't work, new projectors, new microphones, I mean, the whole, the whole thing. So this is a, this is a full project that will hopefully last us for 15 more years or, or, you know, for the near future.
The rest of the rooms were not updated. It was only just one area.
Correct. Right. And Rexing was actually the one that, that did the repair that got, got us to the point where things were tolerable for the last six months or so.
Appreciate it, man.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Dave. Any more questions? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 263.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the number 202515 for bridge and railing replacement and/or restoration project from Luxury Lawn and Landscape of Columbia, Kentucky in an amount not to exceed $153,000.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Hard to believe that our water park is approaching 25 years old. Twenty, 26, sorry. 25 is the past year. And so, uh, the original bridge and railing that goes over, uh, halfway, half of the pool, uh, that you kind of walk over the, the pool is in need of, uh, repair and replacement. And, uh, we went out, uh, and requested bids on this. We got two, uh, vendors that submitted a bid, and, uh, one was Luxury Lawn and Landscape. They came in, uh, at a good price of 153. And, uh, we were recommending that we, uh, go with them for this work. And Brent can answer any questions you might have on this project. Hope, hopefully get this done before next pool season.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Congratulations on 25, Brent. Questions at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 264.
Municipal order authorizing a contract through non-competitive negotiations with MKSK Inc. of Columbus, Ohio for professional services to develop a 10-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan in an amount not to exceed $193,600.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This was in your FY25 budget that you approved. Uh, our last, uh, Parks Master Plan, I believe, was when, it was in 2014. And, uh, we have pretty much knocked out everything that was, um, was recommended in that plan and feel like it's time now to do a new 10-year plan. Uh, Brent went out and looked for, uh, several different firms to, to provide this work for us, uh, given that we have a relationship now with MKSK with our Riverfront Park Development and Jennings Creek. Uh, Brent, uh, has worked with them, and, uh, we are recommending we go with them on this 10-year master plan, uh, that will provide, um, Parks and Facilities Tour, mapping, um, stakeholder meetings, public workshops, uh, statistically valid surveys, uh, trend analysis, level of service analysis, community engagement, site proposals, everything that goes with this. So, uh, re- recommending MKSK, uh, for this 10-year master plan for parks.
I'd have to concur that the last one with community engagement was, um, spectacular and allowed us to, you know, really design what we didn't know. And, uh, like the idea that we're continuing this. Commissioners? Okay. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 265.
Municipal order authorizing a contract through non-competitive negotiations with GRW Engineers Inc. of Lexington, Kentucky in an amount of $70,286.25 for engineering services for artificial turf, sports fields at Lover's Lane Soccer Complex.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This is also, uh, this was also approved in your FY25 budget, uh, to do the, uh, artificial turf fields at Lover's Lane. We're going to do two. And to, to do it right, uh, we've got to get the foundation correct. And so, uh, that requires, uh, some engineering, um, grade work, all that kind of stuff to get, get the base, uh, correct before we get, uh, we lay the, the turf on there. So, uh, went out and looked for some good engineer firms to help us with this. And, uh, this is a professional services, so we are selecting GRW engineers. Uh, they're one of the top-rated firms in the state for doing this type work. Uh, they've done several artificial, uh, turf projects, I believe, and, uh, they're going to help with, um, the conversion, all the geotechnical study, drainage, getting it prepped for construction, and, um, recommending them for $70,286. And Brent, again, is here can answer questions on this project. This is, this is an exciting one.
Oh, these are part of our strategic planning and, um, great to see these things.
This will really help, uh, improve or increase, uh, amount of play on these fields because the problem with the, the, I'm going to talk like I'm an expert here, but I'm not. Uh, I just pretend to be, but the, the Bermuda turf, you cannot, you cannot get it back this time of year. It only grows like, what, two months out of the year in the hot, humid summers. So once it gets beat down, it takes the next year to come around, and the hot summers come back for it to, to regenerate and regrow. So with that being said, once we get this artificial turf down, we won't, we won't have to deal with that. And it's, it's 365, 12 months play year-round.
And it's about a million dollars per field, correct?
It is roughly $2 million for these two fields, yes.
Right.
Feel like it's Parks Night at the City Commission Meeting, Brent.
Merry Christmas. Hey, he asked. We, we're moving forward. It's quality of life, so.
It's a good thing, Brent.
Okay. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 266.
Municipal order authorizing a contract through non-competitive negotiations with Deco Architects Inc. of Somerset, Kentucky in an amount not to exceed $85,000 for architectural services for Paul Walker Pro Shop.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen. Mr. Mizel.
And we continue with parks projects.
For parks.
Uh, this is also in the FY25 CIP. Um, Paul Walker Golf, uh, Pro Shop is, um, it's been there a, a long time, and it's, uh, the top story of it is in very bad shape. Uh, we, I don't know that it's watertight or not, but we had, we had a, a snowstorm, ice storm that frozen pipe and roof problems over the years, drainage problems. So, uh, we feel like, uh, the most cost-effective thing to do, uh, is, is to look at building a, a new pro shop over there. So this is the first step. We need some architectural, uh, advice services. And the company we are, uh, selecting again is, is professional service, so we can, uh, go out and, and just look for, for people. This is Deco. They've done some preliminary work for us to, to see what we could do with the existing one. They helped us renovate, uh, a couple of years ago, the, the shop after the, the water damage that we had and the insurance claim. So we are electing to go with Deco. They know that this property very well, and we feel like they're going to help us, uh, put together a good plan going forward on what we do over there. Brent can answer any questions you might have on this item.
Just one of the concepts I think I remember is, Brent, is that we were going to try to use some of the existing facade and structure of the historic value of that, correct?
That is correct. One of our goals is to keep the outside wall for the all possible or as much as possible on that wall, just to, uh, continue the, we'll say, the, the structure at some, at some form or fashion to the future.
You rec- recall how old that building is or?
It was starting in the 40s.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
And just so you're aware, this would be part of, uh, you'd have your operation for the pro shop, which is the, the pro shop, a cart barn and a patio, but it would also, the eighth storm shelter we're talking about in the future would be, would not be part of what Deco was working for, but that would be the footprint of what they would have. But that makes, uh, that would be.
Be incorporated.
That is right. It would be, the footprint would be there for future storm shelter that we're talking about for Covenant Woods.
And I hate, I hate to admit it, but the restroom facilities at Covenant Woods Park are 1940s, 1950s.
Yeah, I do keep that in mind. This.
So we're gonna, that would be part of this project too, to get those to the 21st century, because we have a lot of children over there that have to go over there and use the bathroom and.
Thank you very, that's right.
I forgot to mention that.
The park itself, so.
Yeah, this is for the whole park. I can see this, you know, all of our parks get, um, this has a lot of historic value to it, and it can get some interest as well, so.
Well, this include the, a new scoreboard out away from the clubhouse?
Actually, we, uh, you're talking about right outside the, the practice green?
Where they.
We actually renovated that in-house this past year. Uh, one of our trades, uh, our carpenter, Brandon Piercey renovated that himself. If you know anything about Brandon, I can tell you that means it's a A-plus job. So, uh, that'll be good for another 40 years, I feel like. It's probably, it's probably.
It was needing.
Yeah, it was needing to, to some love, and he, he took care of that for us.
Good.
Okay. Further questions? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 267.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Gary Counts and Tracy Mosley to the Contractors Licensing Board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Bailey. Uh, these two, uh, Tracy Mosley and Gary have served admirably, and they are eligible for continued service, and they have been asked, and they are willing to continue to serve. And I recommend them for their reappointment.
Mayor, we have, uh, Holly Warren, who's the director at the Contractors Licensing Board.
Oh, Holly.
Does a phenomenal job and enjoys serving alongside her.
Great. And Commissioners, um, you're elg-, we're all eligible to attend those meetings as well, and, um, those are open for us to attend and have been for several years. So thank you, Holly. Okay. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 268.
Municipal order approving the appointments of Yvette Blaha and Dr. Blair Thomas, and reappointments of Matt Davis and Dr. Richard Miller to the Human Rights Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Uh, we actually have in attendance, um, our, uh, Human Resource Commission's Director, uh, Mrs. Alice Waddell. Hello, Alice. And you had a, a festivity for Thanksgiving today. I'm sorry I missed it, but thank you very much for those invitations. Uh, we have two reappointments. Uh, we have Dr. Richard Miller and Officer Matt Davis, which we all know very well, and recommend them for their reappointment. And we have two new appointments. Uh, we have Yvette Blaha. Uh, she is a graduate from Western Kentucky University in Sky CTC. She's a medical specialist currently at Graves Gilbert, and she's worked at the Warren County Justice Center. And we also have another appointment. I believe he's in attendance tonight, and I would like to introduce Dr. Thomas Blair. He has a PhD at Florida State in a public administration. Uh, he currently is a political science, um, teacher at WK University. Uh, he served on the staff at University of Central Florida and Florida State, and has a long list of credentials and would like to introduce you and, says, Dr. Blair, say hello. I'm sorry, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Miller.
All right. Dr. Blair's not here?
No.
Okay. Is, I'm sorry? I haven't met him. Okay.
Dr. Richard Miller.
I'm sorry, Dr. Miller. And, uh, thank you for your reappointment. Thank you for your continued service, and we're grateful, so.
Uh, Dr. Miller has served in the Provost Office at Western Kentucky University, and we've been friends a long time. Congratulations. I'm so glad you're here.
Okay. Questions? None. Roll call at this time.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Thank you both for being here tonight. Municipal order number 2024 dash 269.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for City Manager Jeff Mizel to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Lexington, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Uh, these next, one, two, three, four, five, six are very similar. And so, uh, Mr. Mizel, if you want to explain the six, and then we'll just go through order on these.
So, uh, we are required to approve our, our travel, my, mine, and U, U five. And so that we all, since we all attended the KLC, um, conference back in September, uh, this is before you tonight. As you all know, we, uh, most, hopefully the public knows, we, uh, we all went up to receive the, the 2024 City Government of the Year Award, and, um, Katie attends, Ashley attends, uh, their leaders, uh, and, and Hillary, uh, all participants in their own groups, city manager group, city clerk, city attorneys. And so, uh, it's, it's a really good conference, uh, that we get a lot out of. And I, I appreciate you all letting me attend and, and attending the Kentucky City Managers Meeting and, and networking and going to the classes. Uh, there were some good classes, I thought, this year, uh, that I took some good notes in. So, anyway, recommending these. I don't know how you all just want to go through them. Uh, was hit all six of them, but, uh, that's, that's the gist of it.
I was, thank you, Mr. Mizel. So, um, any questions on these six, and then we'll just go through them in each order, and we'll prove them one at a time. Okay? No further questions on all six. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 270.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for Mayor Todd Alcott to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Lexington, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 271.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for Commissioner Carlos Bailey to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Lexington, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Roll call.
You do not, actually, because, um, based on our policy, um, you are not being reimbursed for anything. This is just a reconciliation of expenses.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2024 dash 272.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Lexington, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigan, second by Commissioner Hill. Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigan.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-273.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for Commissioner Melinda Hill to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Lexington, Kentucky.